Good evening. It is October 25, 2021 at 7:02 PM. I'll call this city council meeting to order and ask that the clerk please call the rule.
Councilmember Betts.
President.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are seven members present in the forum. Councilmember Spitzley is absent.
Please note that Councilmember Spitzley has requested an excused absence and will take care of the end of the meeting. Is there anyone this evening that the council would like us to keep in our thoughts during our moment of meditation? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. If we could remember the John Dare family. He lost his wife this past week. And so he has worked diligently for Lansing Township for a number of years and people might know him from his work in the township. So if we could remember John and his family, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. I would like to keep in our thoughts the latest victim of gun violence in the City of Lansing and their family. I think this is it. We're at 23 now.
Thank you.
So please, please keep them in your thoughts.
Thank you. Mayor Shor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to add to the list Mary Paul Morton, who is, would have been 106 years old on the day of her funeral. She passed a few days short, but I believe she was the oldest living citizen of the City of Lansing. Very impressive woman, so I think we should keep her family in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you very much. The council, please join me in a moment of meditation. That, we need a motion to approve the proceedings, Mr. Vice President.
So moved.
It's a motion before us to approve the proceedings of the 20th and the 11th of September and October respectively. Is there any discussion on the proceedings? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We are to consideration of late items and I think the item is on the agenda but needs a motion.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. At this point, I would like to move to discharge the Committee of the Whole and to bring forth the resolution.
Sorry, councilmember. At this time, I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I would like to, a motion to suspend the rules.
There's a motion to suspend the rules for the allowance of consideration of late items. Judging from the preamble, Councilmember Wood is looking to discharge the resolution appointing Elizabeth O'Leary as the chief labor negotiator for the city. The suspension of the rules is in front of us. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. For those of you in the audience paying attention, we will consider the chief labor negotiator resolution as part of the original agenda, so if you are here to speak on that, you may still do so under Agenda Items.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Councilmembers, wishing to make comment, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So this Wednesday, the South Lansing Business Association is hosting the team up to clean up. So on behalf of the South Lansing Business Association, we'd like to invite you and anyone else that's interested in beautifying the southeast side of Lansing. Children may attend, but please bring your parents. It's beautifying one-half square mile of southeast Lansing, I-96 Cedar, Jolly in Pennsylvania. They're meeting at St. Michael's Episcopal Church at 6,500 Anwood Drive between Menards and Target. That will be this Wednesday, October 27th, from 1:30 PM to 3:30 PM. Please bring gloves and there will be trash bags provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. Are there other members of the council wishing to provide comments? Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah, just real quick, I want to first thank our human, I'm sorry, our human resource director, Linda Sanchez, as well as Brian McGrane from Economic Development and Planning. I did bring forward concern with regards to our code and premise divisions at the last meeting, particularly a couple, I shouldn't say a couple, three vacancies that we have. One in code and another two in premise. And my understanding is, and again, you know, when I talk to them, the urgency with regard to that code position. You know, I think that was underscored in those conversations, but my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but those three positions I believe were posted today, which is, I think, good news for the folks throughout the City of Lansing that rent and that deserve good, safe, appropriate housing to live and also with regards to our premises and things of that nature. The other piece, I want to just say thank you to everybody that was involved in this past Thursday's ribbon cutting. We actually finally cut the ribbon on the Encompass Lansing Art Project that is now positioned at 3434 Pleasant Grove, which is actually the site, sorry, of the southwest Lansing Town Square. It has been a long, difficult process, but there have been so many partners at the table to make sure that we were able to really bring that past the goal line. So, you know, in terms of the respective speakers that day, a lot of, I think, recognition and, you know, and praise is deserved for those individuals and the entities that they represent. You know, we had folks from the City of Lansing, we had folks from Ingham County, we had folks from Leep, and the list goes on. But that day, when I spoke, what I really wanted to do was underscore and highlight the work of southwest Lansing residents and business owners, because folks did some, I mean, truly yeoman's work to make that happen. And I really think, you know, that kind of can-do and never-bail spirit of southwest Lansing, I think over the last two to three years to kind of bring that across the goal line, was, was really on display. And so to the Southwest Action Group, to the Southside Community Coalition, to the respective neighborhoods throughout southwest Lansing, to rejuvenating southwest Lansing, everybody that had a part to play. And not just that, I think, you know, the mayor did a good job that day also underscoring all of the, you know, kind of respective initiatives that have really played out the last few years in southwest Lansing to try to get the ball kind of moving down the field. I don't, I don't think it's any secret that southwest Lansing, the past several decades, has really been kind of undervalued, under-supported, and under-resourced. But, but again, underlying, I should say underscoring the, that never-bail kind of spirit of southwest Lansing, I think what people started to recognize within the last decade is that these folks are there, they deserve support. But, you know, really inspiring is the fact that they're always ready to, you know, kind of roll up their sleeves and be part of the solution. And so again, I want to thank the people in the business owners in southwest Lansing for all they did to make that project possible, but also to make just a number of projects and initiatives that are, that have either, you know, come to fruition or that are underway right now possible. Because again, it's really those folks that are supporting those efforts at the front line. Other than that, there was one other, one other thing I was supposed to put out for swag. What I'll do is I'll circle back with the president and make sure at the end of the meeting I can address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, President Spatafor. I've been reflecting a lot this week about a few issues that have come to my attention. And I just wanted to note, there's a few people here from New York Avenue today who are going to be talking about some issues on their street. And I wanted to thank them who are here and anybody else really who's been proactive in reaching out to this council and to the mayor's office, obviously with some, with neighborhood issues. One thing that we run into, obviously, on council is we're, we're spread pretty thin and sometimes we need people to come to council, speak to us, shoot us those emails so that we know what's going on around the city. And, you know, for, for me, when I was in a public official, it was hard for me to reach out to anybody, to make that phone call, to send that email, to be a bother and everything of that nature. And I'll tell you what, the people who reach out and the people who have those conversations with me and the rest of the people at this dais, those are the people who are helping the rest of their neighbors who are too anxious to come talk to us. So that's just been on my mind today. And of course, you can always reach out to any of us here. We're public officials, we're here to represent you and to represent your issues, at least from a council perspective, the administration and the administration for, you know, all things administrative. So that's just been on my mind today and I appreciate the time, President Spatafor. Turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Any others this evening? Did it come to you, Mr. Vice President?
Yep, it did.
Very good. Mr. Vice President.
All right, thanks so much. So what I was supposed to announce, I apologize, is the next Southwest Action Group meeting, this is the first meeting in quite some time. This group did work to host virtual meetings for a while, but, but there were some, some technical issues that were getting in the way. And so the next Southwest Action Group meeting has actually been set for November 2nd at 6:00 PM. And this is actually going to be at the Southside Community Coalition, which is positioned just east of the quality area of Pleasant Grove and Holmes. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Seeing no other members, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, President Spatafor. Well, we are a couple weeks away, or a week and a day away from our city election here. And there is still time to vote. We have issued about 15,000 absentee ballots and about 7,000 of those ballots are still out in the voters' hands or perhaps in the mail. But I do encourage those folks that have received an absentee ballot to get that back. Tomorrow is the last day. I would recommend using the postal service to do that. If at all possible, get it in the mail tomorrow or use one of our drop boxes or drop it in person. Or one option to drop it off is our Souls to the Polls and Drive-Thru Trunk or Treats that is going on this Saturday at 2,500 South Washington from 1 until 6 o'clock. So invite not just voters, but all Lansing residents to bring their family and come to that event. It should be a fun event. We started it out last year and continuing it this year, we'll have candy, food trucks, giveaway. And if you are eligible and old enough, you can do early voting. You can even register to vote or you can drop your ballot off. And I do want to take a moment and mention that to clarify that, you know, since the ballot proposal of 2018, we now have same-day voter registration in Michigan, so you can still register to vote up until 8 o'clock Election Day. But at this point, you do need to come in person to either my office here at City Hall or at 2,500 South Washington. The 2,500 South Washington has free and easy parking. And again, in addition to the trunk-or-treat hours, we'll be open until 7 o'clock this coming Wednesday and then we'll be open 11:00 AM till 7:00 PM Saturday, 11:00 AM until 4:00 PM on Sunday. And then under state law, 4 o'clock Monday is the last day we can issue an absentee ballot to, to anyone who is already registered. And on Election Day, we can, during the time the polls are open, we, you can register and get an absentee ballot or you can get a receipt and take it to your polling place. So still plenty of options to vote. And again, the trunk-or-treat and souls-to-the-polls, I encourage you to participate, is from 1 until 6:00 PM this Saturday, that's October 30th. Should be a fun time and I encourage you to come out. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you up to one minute to tell us the details of your event.
October 30th, there will be an event in Flint, Michigan, the versus battle, battle between the Dayton family and Top Authority. The Dayton family, I believe, will take it. And anyone here from Lansing that would like to travel one hour away to Flint, Michigan to see that event, it will be at 8 o'clock. Thank you, and I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you.
Any other community events? All right, then I will call out the deadline for filling in the, for signing up for public comment. Thank you. I will call out the deadline for sign-up for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters does include the items four through 18, I'm sorry, five through, three through 18 on the agenda, which is the consent agenda and resolutions for action. So if you're here to speak to one of those, please sign up in the next two minutes. We also have a show cause hearing tonight and that is the green sign-in form. If you received a notice regarding that property, please sign up in the next two minutes if you would like to speak. And while the two minutes is elapsing, we will go to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a variety of things, I'll try and be quick. First, want to let the public know that the City of Lansing Department of Economic Development and Planning is preparing our city's five-year consolidated plan for the next five years. This is the application we submit to HUD for federal funds, for community development block grants, for home investment funds, and emergency solutions grants. If anybody wants to participate in the survey, we have a Survey Monkey in English and in Spanish on online. It's a, it's a long website. You can call 517-483-4040 and they can send you one by paper or they can give you the Survey Monkey. I wanted to also talk about how excited I was about the town square ribbon cutting. I thought Councilman Hussein did a fantastic job of explaining that, but I'm really glad that we were able to get that done and thanks to all the partners in southwest Lansing to help get that done. We all stood out there in the rain and, but it was an exciting, exciting event. I want to congratulate a few, a few people. Congrats to the Exchange Club for their 100th anniversary. Congratulations to Dr. Richard Halleck for having Wainwright renamed after him, the former superintendent. Wonderful, wonderful event. Congratulations to our Citizens Police Academy graduates, that was fun to be there and see them graduate the Citizens Police Academy. Really excited, if you live in southeast Lansing, down at Maguire Park, there is now a fitness cent, a fitness park outside, free fitness. We had a great event there announcing that and doing some fitness work. Downtown, we have a new Middle Village grand, grand opening with several vendors, soaps and sweet, sweet foods and a variety of other things. So that's all been really good. We have, on November 4th coming up, our Neighborhood Resource Summit at Wood Creek. We're back in person on these, so that's really exciting. We are also going to be organizing several budgetary meetings in the next, before the end of the year as we prepare our budget. There will be a hearing on December 15th at City Hall for ARP, American Recovery Program Dollars, that we'd like some public input on and I'll get more information on that. We're also organizing participatory budget meetings. Want to congratulate both Brett Koschinsky and Delisa Fontaine for a great job of doing op-eds in the Lansing State Journal talking about, for Brett Parks and for Delisa, our Neighborhoods Department. This weekend is Halloween, so anybody who's watching, please remember trick-or-treating in Lansing is from 6 to 8:00 PM. We're going to have several events. The clerk talked about souls to the polls and I think that's great, they're doing that. We're also going to have an event at Francis Park from 1 to 3 where we'll be giving away candy on Saturday. So families can come on Saturday and get their candy for their kids at 1 to 3. And then our police and fire, we'll be having an event at the Police Operations Center off of Wise Road in southwest Lansing from 4 to 6. So families can get candy from 1 to 3 at Francis Park, 4 to 6 at the Police Operations Center, and then still go out and trick-or-treat on Sunday, I guess, if they want. Lots of opportunities for the kids, which is great. I also want to congratulate the Lansing Concert Band on their 75th anniversary. That was over the weekend. And there was one other thing that I feel like now I'm forgetting, but I can't remember what it was. So I will, if I think of it, oh, sorry, I figured it out. We have the Fall Color Tour coming up at Fine Park on November 3rd from 4 to 6:00 PM. And that will also be filmed by, by TV, by City TV. Oh, and we have our coat drive. Please, if you have any lightly-used or new coats that you're willing to donate, we've got a variety of drop-offs at City Hall and several community centers. That's what I've got, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Shor.
Okay, we are to public, we are to show cause hearings, so we have a hearing in consideration of orders to make safer demolish to the owners of property at 4108 Deerfield Avenue.
Is anyone speaking on that?
And we have no one signed up to speak.
Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. So in consideration of orders to make safer demolish with the owners of property located at 4108 Deerfield Avenue, the code compliance officer has determined that this building, located at 4108 Deerfield Avenue, parcel number 33-01-01-31-251-141, legally described as Lot 118 Pleasant subdivision number one. City of Lansing is an unsafe or dangerous building as defined in Section 108.1. And the building was red-tagged on April 10th of 2018. This property, the SEV value is at $29,400. It doesn't have an estimated cost of repairs as of yet, not on this, I don't know if that was a misprint, usually it does. But let it be resolved that the owners at 4108 Deerfield Avenue as legally described above are hereby directed to comply with the order of the hearing officers to demolish or otherwise make safe the said building within 30 days. This is a fire-damaged property. According to inside, it looks like it's a fire-damaged property, so that's why I'm assuming it's the 30 days. So be further resolved that the property owners is hereby notified that this order must be appealed within 20 days pursuant to MCL 125 dot point 142, or 542. And should the owners fail to comply with the hearing officers' order for demolition or make safe, the code compliance officer is hereby directed to proceed with demolition of said building. With that, I would move show cause hearing.
That is a proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Can we do that? No, I'm sorry.
Nope, this is just the hearing. So we are to the referral of show cause hearing.
Yeah, back to the Committee on Public Safety.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters. And legislative matters, as I said, includes items three through 18 on our agenda. And the first speaker is David Lambert, followed by Kyle Richard, or, I'm sorry, Kyle Richard.
Good evening. My name is David Lambert. I live at 1023 South Holm Street and I'd like to speak about the request from MDOT to, for a noise variance, to allow it to complete work on I-496 more quickly. I strongly support anything that can, that can speed up any such project. The I-496 freeway is a major artery through our city and if it's blocked, there's a, a likelihood that 127 could also be impacted and, and have traffic slowdowns. Every day that that happens, there are more cars going on side streets, there are longer commutes for people on the freeway, there's more noise during rush hour because of more cars, and more danger to the people on sides, on side streets. And I understand that it's hard to get, to get sleep when there's construction in the middle of the night. My understanding from the discussion at the meeting two weeks ago was that MDOT would take measures to minimize the noise and it would not actually be continuous, it would just sometimes happen in the middle of the night. I happen to live on a street where the bus goes by, not midnight, but 10 o'clock at night, 6:00 in the morning. I hear trains in the middle of the night. There are a lot of noises in our city and, and these noises would be temporary. I think it's better for us to allow them to get that project done as expeditiously and quickly as possible.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Kyle Richard.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I wrote down I was going to speak on item 13 and 18, but I'm also going to speak briefly on item 16. For item 13, it's the MDOT request to allow I-496 freeway reconstruction on weekdays, 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and anytime on weekends or holidays for the period January 24th through 2022 through December 1st, 2022. So essentially, the whole year next year. And for the period March 1, 2023 through November 15, 2023. And so again, the better part of the year. And I understand that this is, it's a noise, it's sleep, but at the end of the day, I'm up here speaking on it because there's a human factor and a labor factor here. If we approve the noise permit, we're essentially saying, okay, yeah, put men, put men and women down, down on the road in the middle of the night. And I'm not a construction expert, but I would venture to guess that workplace injuries probably go up on the night shift. And so that's something to consider. The point 16, the Grand Amendment Emergency Rental Assistance, I do think that it's good that we have money coming into the community to help people with rent and utilities. I don't think we should paint it as helping renters when essentially what this program is, is funneling money into landlords' pockets. If we want to help renters, we need to talk about tenants' rights, we need to talk about tenants' lawyers, we need to talk about rent control, because we can't just keep expecting, oh, the state's going to send us money or the, or, you know, the federal government's going to send us money, when we have landlords that are gouging their tenants for every penny they have. We need to deal with the landlords first if we're going to help renters in this city. And then lastly, on the ward appointment plan, I'm not sure if there's any, it might be too late to change anything from, I saw a little bit of the Committee of the Whole today. I do, I saw a comment a few meetings ago that was sort of, it felt like a creative solution, kind of this idea of eliminating the at-large positions and instead reworking the map to have eight wards, so that we don't see this like disproportionate representation from the fourth ward and having equal representation throughout the city. If that's not something that's possible to do today, I think that's something that should be considered for the future. And thank you.
Thank you. And I would remind the audience that this is not an appropriate time for applause. We do have council rules that restrict that. We are now to the consent agenda.
There's a number of items on the consent agenda, but it's my understanding a few would be removed. Are there any that are coming off? Councilmember Wood?
I would move item 11 off so that we can explain that item.
Thank you. All right, any other objections or removals? Seeing none, we'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda, consent agenda?
I would move to, I'm sorry, I would move the amended consent agenda.
Got right in there under the wire. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we are to item 11, the appointment of Elizabeth O'Leary as chief labor negotiator.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. During the Committee of the Whole, I asked some questions of Elizabeth O'Leary concerning the IAFF contract for Union 214. I had been given information that part of the delay was part of the responsibility of HR Department and the City Attorney's Office. During the break, I actually had a conversation with the president of the union who fell on his sword and, and made it clear that he was the one responsible for the delay in this contract and it had to do with some different people that are reviewing that, that had some personal illnesses and that and had not had an opportunity to finish the task. And so with that, I would move the appointment of Elizabeth O'Leary as a chief labor negotiator.
That is a proper motion. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries with one objection.
Okay, we are to item 12, John Shaski to the Saginaw Corridor Improvement Authority.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have before us, the appointment of John Shaski as a member of the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority for a term to expire June 30th, 2022. John Shaski met before us on the October 19th Development and Planning Committee meeting and he was vetted through the committee. He's going to bring a perspective of Sperrill Hospital to that important corridor. He's going to bring a perspective of Sparrow Hospital to that important corridor improvement authority, and his term is to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, was originally had as two thousand twenty-five since the substitute was amended. With that, I would move the appointment.
I think we need to.
We actually do have a substitute right here. We need to first adopt it, though. So I need a motion to adopt the substitute.
So moved.
Okay, very good. All those in favor of adoption of the substitute, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good, motion carries. Now, Councilmember Garza, motion for the resolution.
With that, I would move the resolution of action for John Shasky as a member of the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority for a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Very good, that's a proper motion. I see just a hand up from Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. When you mentioned from the Sparrow Hospital perspective, I just want to remind that over the last few years, it seems like Sparrow's been divesting from their corridor when it moved its emergency room out, plus I believe some other services. So, you know, maybe it's more John as the person, who I understand is a good person, but hopefully Sparrow, and it's not like a plan to divest anymore, because those services are appreciated when they're there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Garza.
So, so yes, so they are actually having eight hundred million dollars in capital investment throughout the region and the area, and they will be investing in that property as well, so.
Thank you. The motion before us is for the resolution appointing John Shasky to the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority. Mr. Clerk? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Nope, I don't want to recall. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
We're to item number thirteen, the noise special permit.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you very much. All right, so we had a very, very interesting conversation about this in committee just before we came out on the floor for committee of the whole. We had two folks in here from MDOT, and, and we talked a lot about resident concerns that live in the area near, sort of east of Grand Avenue where the apartments are and the condos are on either side of four ninety-six. And what we learned, and what we got a commitment from them, is that even though the, the way that the waiver is written, it allows for construction during that whole time, there will not be construction during that whole time. They have committed that they will only be doing the, the overnights in those areas up to two nights a week every two weeks, so that is far less than every day. And they were, they'll be limiting the activities that cause the most noise, which is the breaking of the pavement, trying to do that during the daytime hours. The, the most annoying sound that they'll probably hear at night is the backup trucks, and we can't get an OSHA, it's an OSHA requirement that they have the, the things that beep on the back of the trucks when they're backing up. But they are going to have community meetings with the folks that are in the affected areas. They've given us phone numbers, there are websites, they're going to have community dialogues throughout this process, so if folks are affected in ways that, that they can do something to mitigate the sound, they will. And we, it seemed like they were, they were very receptive to what, what we were telling them as far as, as those concerns and what they could do feasibly to get this project done in the timeframe that they need to. And the, the, one of the speakers mentioned a concern about folks, it being more dangerous at night during the construction on the roads, but actually that is the least dangerous time for them statistically, because that's the least amount of traffic on the road at that time. And so they, they will be doing certain things that, that need more of a vacant space in the road overnight. So if nobody else has any questions, I think I covered it. But yeah, we would move this resolution. And I will say, before I do that, the phone number for anybody that's out there that wants to call and get information about these meetings is five-one-seven-three-three-five-three-seven-five-four. Three-three-five-three-seven-five-four, and you will get put through to somebody who is working specifically on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And they've also shared, I think, they have a website that they'll be sharing back with us, and we're going to get it.
Yeah, the Bitly wasn't working.
Yeah, right, yeah, they'll fix that. Anything else from questions, Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, President Spatafor. The one thing that I would note here, just, we don't need to make any amendments to the language or anything, but the fifth whereas, we did have some written comments, but we've been assured by Councilmember Dunbar, and I had, I was in the meeting where we had this conversation, that I, I believe that the residents' concerns are going to be pretty well addressed. Our public servants over in MDOT are very aware and very concerned about our neighborhoods, and I appreciate that. So just in the future with that fifth, fifth whereas, if, using the words substantive is a little bit uncomfortable for me, only because we did receive written comment. So just for the record, we did receive comment there, and then I think, I am excited to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I will mention that in the printed packet, it says for a period from January twenty-fourth, that is incorrect, it is from March first, two thousand twenty-two, through December first, two thousand twenty-two, and then again, March first, two thousand twenty-three, through November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yep.
There is a motion before us to approve the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries with one objection.
Okay, we are to item fourteen, the ERPA grant.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. The grant that we have before us is in the amount of forty-nine million nine-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. This grant is part of the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. We have already, in our budget, have approved for the first payment of the twenty-four million six-hundred, or nine-hundred-and-sixty, twenty-four million nine-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. The balance of this grant, which is a second payment, will be available in the FY two thousand twenty-three budget. This money is only appropriating, this is accepting the grant and only appropriating the first twenty-four million dollars. As the mayor indicated, they are going to have some public forums on this. One of the things that the committee has been adamant about as, as having these meetings is making sure that we understand where those dollars can be spent before we give people the perception that those dollars are out there and can be spent anywhere. They have to conform with the act, and we are understanding that we're still waiting for some of that information. So we encourage the administration, again, before having any meetings, that they have that particular information available to them. So with that, I would move the acceptance of this grant, again, understanding that we have approved the twenty-four million. It was part of our budget that was approved in May. The balance of this, the second payment of the twenty-four million, is accepting it, but not appropriating it. So it will have to come back to this body to appropriate that in the future. So with that, it's my motion on the grant.
Very good, that is a proper motion. Is there discussion? Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I've got a lot to say today, apparently. I apologize. Councilmember Wood, I really appreciate your due diligence in trying to make sure within ways and means that we have a conversation about where these funds can be spent and where they are going to be spent as well. The one thing that I would request from the administration from this perspective is that in next year's budget, we have a separate listing in the executive budget of where these dollars were spent exactly, just, you know, from a verification perspective at the least, we're not going to necessarily read the law, but just to, you know, to, I'm going to read the law, I have already, but you know, we, we just want to make sure that we have a line on accounting to be able to tell our constituents, this is where this money ended up going. So I'd appreciate that moving forward. I see that you're not in agreement. Thank you. Thank you, President Spatafor.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
We have the grant acceptance, item fifteen, for MISTDA Neighborhood Stabilization.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. This grant is for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Fifty-two thousand five hundred will be used for personnel. One-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-five-hundred will be used for construction. What, there is a sixty-thousand-dollar match, which is anticipated to come out of our Community Development Block Grant Emergency Repair Fund and LED Safety Lansing Fund. The proposal for this would be working in the Churchill Downs neighborhood. The funds would be approximately twenty-five thousand dollars per dwelling, and this would be to provide exterior repairs at, on approximately eight owner-occupied, single-family dwellings. The exterior rehabilitation items could include a new roof, new siding, and/or aluminum trim, or exterior paint, windows, or windows and screen repairs, new exterior doors and weather stripping, self-storing aluminum, aluminum storm doors, new concrete porch, wood porches, new vinyl railings. We also talked about the fact that some of the homes in the Churchill Downs have had problems with flooding in their backyard due to drainage, and this could be something that would be considered. There's also the ability on top of this twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant to use community development block, block grant dollars as well as LED safe dollars to add to the repairs that might be needed on, on these properties. Very excited, again, that the work in the Churchill Downs neighborhood and working on these properties. So with that, I would move this grant acceptance.
It's a proper motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
We have item sixteen, emergency rental assistance grant amendment.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so we had Jake Brower in the committee of the whole earlier to discuss this. We were, he, he discussed the fact that we were alerted in March of two thousand and twenty-one that we would be receiving thirteen million dollars for rental assistance for those at eighty percent AMI or below throughout Ingham County. Essentially, what we're doing is acting as fiduciary, sorry, for the county, and this is part of the U.S. Treasury's Department Consolidated Appropriations Act, sorry. We were alerted in July that there would be an amendment, because that number had risen to thirty million, and recently we've been notified that we are getting another sixteen million dollars, which brings the total to forty-six million thirty-nine thousand two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars in rental assistance, sorry, which this resolution contemplates. So again, this requires a second amendment. With that being said, I would move the resolution.
It is a proper motion. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. There were a few questions that were asked during the committee of the whole of Mr. Brower. He provided an email and to clarify a couple of things that he said. One is the estimated filing fee included the cost to Dykema as our bond counsel, and Beard was paid seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars or zero-point-zero-one-six percent of the forty-six million dollars. And they are, he's going to attach the contract and relevant invoices to Eric Brewer. Also, he had said that the fiduciary was, when we asked about Ingham County, the city is the fiduciary for MISTDA, not Ingham County, so he wanted to clear that up as well. So with those comments, I wanted to make sure that those were in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes.
We are to item seventeen, the twenty-two meeting schedule.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, so as, as he does every year, the city clerk worked with our council president and our office manager to put together a sec, essentially, at least that's the way I believe it works. If I'm wrong, I apologize. But in any event, kind of a recommended list of meeting dates for the following year. In any event, this kind of contemplates a continuation of what we've been doing with committee of the whole and city council meetings on Monday nights. As much as possible, they tried to position those council meetings on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. Obviously, there are holidays and things of that nature that had to be worked around. The city charter does require that we meet at least twenty-six times, and so this does put forth, as my understanding, twenty-six meeting dates, the first being January third, which is our organizational meeting, the last being December twelfth. Is that correct? Yes. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
It is a proper motion. Is there any discussion on the agenda, or the resolution, excuse me? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, and we have item eighteen, the apportionment plan for the city wards.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, so this, this was kind of an interesting conversation in, in committee of the whole. Every ten years, the U.S. Census Bureau essentially conducts a U.S. census, and what, what that precipitates, among other things, is reapportionment, really across, I should say, we have congressional districts that are reapportioned, we have state legislative districts that are reapportioned, we have county commission districts that are reapportioned, and then we do the same thing at the city level. Locally, we have an election commission that consists of the city attorney, the city clerk, as well as our city assessor. And essentially, you know, at least my understanding is that the goal is always to try to create access for voters, number one, to ensure that polling centers are large enough to accommodate the number of voters that live in or near that area, and then lastly, to ensure as closely as possible that each ward has, that there's some parity with regards to the number of voters in each ward. So in any event, the city clerk did put forth an apportionment plan, put that, or I should say, presented that to the election commission, and my understanding is that on October fifth, that plan was approved by the elections commission. This plan would move three different neighborhoods to different wards in order to enhance voter accessibility and create more parity among the, the voting populations. About three thousand residents would be affected, and specifically, two neighborhoods, one from the third ward just south of the South Washington Election Unit, and then one from the, from the first, which is east of the same location, would move to the fourth ward and vote at the South Washington Election, Election Unit. On the north side, one neighborhood off of Turner Street would move from Ward Four to Ward One and would vote at Guyer, as it's the larger space and can accommodate more voters. If approved, and there was a lot of conversation with respect to this piece, if approved, this would not actually go into effect this year, it would go into effect starting in January of two thousand and twenty-two. So with that being said, I'd move the resolution.
That is a, that is a proper motion? Any discussion? Seeing, oh, Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I just, I just want to speak specifically to the fact that I am losing a part of my ward in this. And originally, I kind of had planned to fight it just a little bit. Folks know that the South Washington Park Apartments has had historic issues, I think with under-representation. And so really, over the last five, maybe five and a half, six years, myself and a few of our council members, two of them that, which are sitting to the left of me, have worked incredibly hard to make sure that they have adequate representation over at thirty-two-hundred South Washington. I remember back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, people referring to this, this neighborhood, this vertical neighborhood, as the Tower of Tiers, or the Carter, or, and so very early in two thousand and sixteen, you know, we got busy, really, you know, trying to get in there, documenting the issues, you know, calling people to the carpet when we talk about our public safety committee. We even had meetings on-site, and we addressed a number of issues with regard to, I think, some of the senior-level management with regards to the commission, some of the board, some of the commissioners, some of the safety issues, on-site safety issues, nuisance issues such as bedbugs and the like. And we saw quite a bit of movement. There, there certainly was some upheaval in terms of our executive director positions and things of that nature, along with some of the, there was some transition in terms of the board of commissioners. But what we saw was some, some forward movement. We saw commercial drivers, you know, bringing, brought in, or being brought in, sorry, to address bedbug issues. We saw security enhancements in terms of additional video monitoring software, as an example. We saw upgrades to our front door into the, into the key fob system. We saw the support of We saw the support of resident councils and, and really resident support and things of that nature from various agencies throughout the community that were brought in. And, and most recently, which is really exciting, they've actually started to invest over $13 million to complete really a total renovation of that particular property. And so it, it, this was, this was a tough one for me. And I started to, you know, maybe midstream, take a look at this from a different perspective in that I will always work to represent those folks. I know that we will always have council representatives at large working to represent those folks. And then, to me, we're gaining a, hopefully, a fierce advocate, and right now, obviously, Brian Jackson with the fourth ward position in perpetuity. So I, I look at this almost as actually enhancing their representation, but it took me a while to get there, to be candid, because these folks, I think, deserve absolute fierce advocacy, and they need that support, that equitable support. So in any event, I look forward to partnering, partnering with Brian Jackson into the future with regards to representing these folks and ensuring that they have a voice at this day in these chambers and that we continue to move their situation forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Is there any other, further discussion on the ward apportionment map, reapportionment map? Mr. Councilman Garza.
Just real quick, so I say this doesn't come into effect till 2022. Is it January 1st of 2022?
You know, you can read the city charter, you can read the city charter and the state law, and they have vaguely different, it clearly does not impact this election. The city charter says it goes into effect after the next general election, but it isn't really specific. State law has different phrasing, but, you know, clearly, these voters have voted for the third ward council member in the past, the immediate ones that he's speaking of, and will vote for the fourth ward. So, I mean, I think there is an overlap of where they can consider both of them to be their proper representative. And I hope that both ward council members do consider that as well as an overlap, as a transition period. And, you know, as I mentioned in Committee of the Whole, the fact that our wards are elected at different times, we're always going to have this every, every time we do reapportionment for the city. But, you know, again, I would, I would encourage exactly what Vice President Hussein said, that, that both council members, both ward council members, the, the one that they're leaving and the one that they're going into would keep an eye out for them.
Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Cook Swop. I actually appreciate that comment a lot, you know, with, with green law, and as I mentioned in the Committee of the Whole, we've been having some longer-term issues that we've been working through, and it's going to take some more time to get through. And I am very excited to partner with Councilman Jackson over the next few months and into the future, really working on this. Because, you know, the, the truth is, we represent a particular ward, the, the four of us who are ward reps, but we get calls from everybody. And we answer those calls, and we talk to those people, and we try to figure out, you know, the best way to move this city forward. And I, I think that, that perspective is exactly right. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Any others? Seeing none, if those in favor of the Lansing ward apportionment plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back. If you could please give that to Ross if you want to sign up to speak and have not already done so. We'll be finalizing that sign up in the, in a, in two minutes. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Mr. Vice President.
Sorry, I would move that all items be considered as read and full and that the appropriate referrals be made by you.
Thank you very much. It's a proper motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
We have minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
We have the Elected Officers Compensation Commission 2022 meeting schedule.
The Committee of the Whole?
Liquor license Lorenzos, Inc. at 1247 Center Street.
The Committee on City Operations.
Grant acceptance for the Automobile Theft Prevention Authority Grant.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
And a grant amendment, Emergency Rental Assistance, CERA grant.
Place on file, please.
With the appointment of Paul Collins, is an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority.
The Committee of the Whole.
And the appointment of Chris Young as the fourth ward member of the Board of Public Service.
Committee on City Operations.
Grant acceptance, Burn, Justice Assistance Capital Area Response Effort Unit Grant.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
Communications and petitions, we have notice from the Liquor Control Commission about KC Express requested transfer ownership of a liquor license.
The Committee on City Operations.
And notice, another liquor control notice, the transfer of a liquor license at 916 Cesar Chavez.
Also, the Committee on City Operations.
We have an affidavit of disclosure, Tori Brooks of the Lansing Police Department.
The Ethics Board.
And motion of excused absence.
We have one member needing excuse, Councilmember Hussein. This motion has been moved to excuse Councilmember Spitzley from the meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Any further remarks this evening? Councilmember Dunbar, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I was, I had mentioned earlier during our moment of silence when we were reflecting on folks who have lost their lives, and I couldn't remember the young man's name, and I have it now, it's Noah Sizong, who is the latest victim of homicide in the city of Lansing. He was shot at Pennsylvania and Kendon. The officers and the firefighters that responded didn't realize he was, he was shot until his vehicle crashed, and they found the gunshot wound on the way to the hospital. And he died at the hospital. And I am, I am saddened, one, I will say this, that we've gotten to 23 homicides, gun-related homicides, in the city of Lansing this year. And I wish that there was more of a sense of urgency to address these in, in a comprehensive way, because I'm not seeing that. And to that end, one of the articles that I had read was saying, why, why is there nothing for these kids to do? What can they do? And so I wanted to offer up for those that are listening, who have teenagers between ninth and 12th grade, that we are offering something up this weekend on Devil's Night on October 30th. And I say Devil's Night because that is traditionally an evening when kids get rambunctious and out of control, and might engage in things that could ultimately end up badly. So I want to point out that from 10 o'clock at night until 10 o'clock in the morning, from Friday night until Saturday, or from Saturday night until Sunday morning, again on October 30th, the Village Lansing, in conjunction with South Lansing Community Development Association, is going to host a high school community lock-in. And it is going to be in the gym at 800 West Barnes. We are going to have activities all night. There's live DJs from All of the Above, Hip-Hop Academy, full-court basketball all night, live performances by local artists. We're having food and games and prizes all night. You do need to have parental permission. You can go to thevillagelancing.org/events to get that permission slip, or any parents that bring their kids to the gym that night can fill out a permission slip that night. But it is important that we, as a community, embrace these kids and come up with solutions to give them alternatives. And in addition to it being a fun gaming night, we're also going to be talking to them about conflict resolution and ways to manage trauma and, and what they're experiencing. Because in order to solve this problem, we need to be talking to the kids and the families of those who are immediately affected by it. We're not going to do that sitting up here in the top of City Hall. We need to be in the community doing that. And so I hope, anybody that's listening to this, if you've got kids, if you're a teenager that's listening and you're between the, you know, ages of ninth grade and 12th grade, please consider doing this. Again, it's thevillagelancing.org/events to get the permission slip. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Are there any other councilmembers? Seeing, Councilmember Betts.
One last time tonight, this is a record for me. I just want to do add, I forgot at the beginning, if you are from New York Avenue and want to discuss afterwards, next steps, I'll be available, I'll come meet you guys up front. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to public comment, and we have Larry Hutchinson, followed by Kyle Richard.
Mr. Clerk? We skipped the mayor's comments, it looks like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hutchinson, if you bear with us just a moment. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything to add for the evening?
I did, thank you. I remember what I, it's okay, I remember what I forgot earlier today. I wanted to congratulate the South Side Community Coalition. They held a Stop the Violence event last weekend with lots of different groups and, and activities for our children. They utilized the $180,000 that this, that we proposed, and this body passed. I thought it was an excellent event. I was glad to be there and part of it. So thank you to all the folks at the South Side Community Coalition. I want to congratulate Elizabeth O'Leary, she's going to be a fantastic labor negotiator. And last but not least, I know Councilman Hussein mentioned this to me, I wanted to, to give a slight update on yard waste. We know that, that we went to every other week due to staffing issues. We have been desperately trying to get staffed up so we can go weekly. We are actually at the point right now where we can get yard waste every week and a half. So our advice to residents is going to be to continue to expect to have your yard waste retrieved on your day every two weeks, but feel free to put it out as soon as you collect it. We think we can get it a little bit faster than every two weeks, but we don't want to promise every week and then be late. So we continue to work on staffing. Certainly, as we have staff, it goes into trash and recycling first, and then yard waste, but we are going to be doing more with staff that we have to try and pick up faster, and then should that change, we'll let folks know. And we're going to be posting the, the end date for yard waste collection, which I don't know offhand, but I believe it's the very end of November. But we will have that up on the city's social media page, so please keep an eye on that. It should be out this week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, Mr. Hutchinson.
Please, just call me Larry. Let's see if this thing works. Oh, so long, for this night I prayed, that a star would guide you my way. Stevie Wonder, baby. Y'all know he went to school here. I'm Larry Hutchinson, candidate for Governor of Michigan 2022. And I'm here to represent this young man right here, this little baby right here. That's me, that's my baby picture. You got that up there? Yeah, that's me and my baby picture, my mother, my grandfather, my grandmother, who had the most influence on me she had. She taught me how to plant, and my first experience with politics was with her, when people would put yard sale, yard signs in the yard, and I would just jump over them. Oh, it was so cool, it was awesome. And my uncle, he would watch Crossfire every night, CNN, Saturday. So with that said, again, I'm recruiting for the Green Party, and I want everybody to join because, let's face it, we got candidates that have the same yard signs, the same color, you guys lack for creativity, blue and white yard signs. Every, and then my, my man Evan, he has his all-around whatever. With any event, this young man, and we talk about Halloween, we talk about young people, we talk about violence, but you let this young man, right here, who was born on an army base in 1972, you let him get raped by the media, and you say nothing. You take a Puchus pilot approach and wash your hands of it. You say nothing. And as a, an army baby, let us not forget Colin Powell. Is this how we treat our patriots? Is this how we treat our veterans? With such little press coverage. And I don't really watch the news a lot, but my goodness, he was almost president. And this is how we treat our people? This is how we treat our artists? And yeah, the city polls, and you, you ban me all you want, but let me tell you something, baby. Let me tell you something, it's not all about the white man on the tape, on the paper with false teeth and fake hair.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kyle Richard, followed by Teresa Schultz.
Thank you again, everyone, for being here. As I sort of hinted at, I got caught up on city council meetings ended last week. And I do want to say I appreciate y'all inviting the new Lansing superintendent here to speak. As someone who worked for two and a half years at Sexton High School before having to leave for health reasons, hearing what he had to say and his assessment of the district was a very validating experience, and it was an experience where it felt like he definitely knew what he was talking about. I also saw an article that says we're going to be doing hybrid meetings in April. I've got mixed feelings about that. I definitely appreciate the president seeking to his word on budget priorities for next year, but I do think it shows a lack of, I guess, willingness to make it a priority, and frankly, imagination. For $200, y'all could have put a Chromebook on this table, done remote comment after in-person comment. I'm sure Clerk Swop knows how to run a Chromebook. Yeah, and then I, I wanted to use some of this time to talk briefly about who I'll be voting for this election and why. In the fourth ward, I will be voting for Councilman Brian Jackson. At this point, I would rather you than someone new. I think you have a historical perspective on this space that Elvin simply does not have, and I think you've proven yourself as someone who is able to and capable of fighting for working-class people in this city. If I could vote in the second ward, I would be voting for Oprah Revish because I feel as though she would fight for working-class people in this body, which is something that I simply have not seen from Councilman Garza, and the silence is very loud. Your silence in this space tells me that you're okay with what's going on. In the at-large race, I will not be voting for President Spatafor. I actually will only be voting for Chloretta Duckett-Freeman, because I do not believe that President Spatafor, Rachel Willis, or Jeffrey Brown are willing or able to fight for working-class people in this city. And then there's the mayoral race, and personally, I think this one's pretty easy. On this side, we have Councilmember Dunbar, who, as far as I can tell, genuinely wants to do the right thing, sometimes obviously has her own issues, just like every one of us, but she's willing to ask for help, which I think is something we should look for in the leader. And on this side, we have Mayor Andy Shore. The low number is nine racial discrimination lawsuits, not just against the city, but against your administration and you as an individual. I personally can't get past your authorization of the use of tear gas on the people of Lansing, on literal children. And then getting upset when your daughter was upset by, you know, peaceful protesters. Sort of feels like a little bit of a double standard there. And I'd also say that, you know, when Anthony Hulon was murdered in the city jail, you kept your mouth shut, but when the racial discriminate, when the Racial Justice and Equity Plan came through, you, you were perfectly fine getting your hands all in it. So I'll be voting for Councilmember Dunbar. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we have Teresa Schultz.
Good evening. I'm here to discuss, I'm from New York Avenue. We have a house on New York Avenue, 1428, New York. It is a nuisance house. These, there's different people that visit this house. We have seen them stop our preschool buses and deal drugs right in the middle of the street. They have stolen my drive, my placard for handicap, I'm handicapped, and they have stolen that. They have stolen all of my license plates. They are out there screaming in the streets all night long, all day long, cussing. My children are cussing now. Well, you hear it, they heard it from the house. These people are pointing guns at our children, and nothing is being done. We were told that it was red-tagged. Okay, why is there people living in it if it's red-tagged? City code was, comes out, they cuss out city code. City code says they're not coming back again, because they're afraid of them. We need something done about this house. We finally got, the police came out, finally got them out of the house, just for them to come back at nighttime and terrorize us. They are dealing out of the back of the house now. Please keep coming. I proved that, that the placard that was in their car was mine. I have it registered to my name. I cannot get around in the wintertime, but yet, how am I supposed to do this when theirs keeps stealing our plates? My license plates, my placards for men disabled? I get tickets, I'll get all the tickets that they've used my license plates for, but yet, nothing is being done about this house. We really need something to be done about this house. I'm afraid of, for my children, I'm afraid for my neighbors, they have pointed guns at us, they have done all kinds of things to us, they call us racist because we are white, but yet, I don't care whether, what color you are. My grandchildren are of all colors, it doesn't matter. All lives matter. But to me, drugs do not.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda for the evening, and at seven, I'm sorry, eight fourteen PM, the city council stands adjourned.